All right, if we could, well, wait for the roll call till Freddie gets here. But if we could all please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, everyone, for coming out. Greatly appreciated. Bard County update, Steve Geller. I'm going to have you come on up and get us rocking, if you would, please. So, welcome and thanks for coming out. Steve Geller, County Commissioner with Bard County.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission and staff. I must warn you, I only have about an hour and a half for my remarks now, so I'm just a funny guy. Just kidding. I'm Steve Geller. I am your County Commissioner. Prior to serving in the County Commission, I served for 20 years in the Florida Legislature. I was in the Florida House of Representatives for nine years and the Florida Senate for 11. I currently represent seven cities or parts. Roughly, the district is from University to 27, mostly, sometimes to Dykes, from about Pines Boulevard to about Broward or Sunrise Boulevard. That's roughly the district. That includes all of Southwest Ranches. It includes a good chunk of Pembroke Pines. It's all of Cooper City, which is where I live. It's all of Davie, west of University. It's about a third of west in that portion, all of west and east of Bonaventure Boulevard. It's all of Plantation, that is both west of University and south of, I believe it's Sunrise there, and just a couple of precincts in Sunrise. I've spent a lot of time recently up in Tallahassee. Before I say that, it's a pleasure to be here. I try and either do town meetings in every city that I represent or else speak to their city or town councils or commissions. One of the other things I do, and I know, Mr. Mayor, you've already RSVP'd every year, I invite every elected official, the city managers and the city attorneys in my district to a lunch, which I provide. When I say all of the elected, I'm referring to all of the city, town councilmen, councilpeople and commissioners. So, the next one is next Wednesday. As I said, I know that the mayor has RSVP'd. I don't, Commissioner, Councilman Hartman, if anyone else. And Keith, I don't know if you're going, but I've invited, again, the town attorneys, city attorneys, as well as the city managers. And at this, I will have the Deputy County Administrator, as well as the Assistant County Administrator, that's responsible for our traffic surtax, so that they can answer all of your questions about the local roads. And the reason I do these is I'll spend a couple of minutes talking, but I hope to spend most of the time listening, just to hear if there's something that the cities, the towns want, tell me. I mean, if I can help you, I will, and I'm bringing top staff there to help, but if you don't tell me what you're asking for, I can't help you. Tonight, for example, I've had three different people all talk about transportation issues to me. So, I will be scheduling a meeting with Councilman Hartman and the city engineer, along with the county traffic engineer, and I'll attend as well, to try and reach some resolutions on certain issues which have been raised, including horse crosswalks, school crosswalks and guardrails. So, again, we'll do that. As I said, I've just spent, gotten back from the legislative session. I spend a lot of time there advocating for Broward County. I've received, for both prior years, and assume we'll do so this year, the Florida Association of Counties Presidential Advocate Award for helping to support home rule. I do not understand why the Florida Legislature, and they did not do this my first 14 or 15 years up there, they started doing it in 2002, '03, '04, but these days, they seem to think that the cities and counties are their enemies. They come in and tell the federal government, "Federal government, keep your hands off because the government that's closest to the people knows better," and then they go and try and preempt everything we do here, which I just don't understand, other than they're hypocrites. When I was in the Senate, four of the years I was there, I represented Hallendale and Clueston. I represented Fort Lauderdale and Amokalee. I had four counties, and I can tell you, plus everything in between, of course, the solutions that will work in Amokalee or Everglade City won't work in Fort Lauderdale or Hallendale. And what works in Fort Lauderdale probably isn't going to work in Southwest Ranches. So, I recognize that. And by the way, I'll talk to you briefly on radio towers, which I think is an important public safety issue, but on zoning issues. And I may change this, this is not an ironclad commitment, but during the time I have been in the Commission, I have never once voted to overrule the local cities zoning, or actually land use decisions, because we don't get to review zoning only land use. Because, again, there's, I represent a quarter of a million people. This is a much smaller community, and I think you guys really do better understand and represent the will of the voters. So, while I'm not committing that I will never go against, if there's something I find particularly egregious, I can tell you that during my time on the Commission, the last two and a half years, I have not yet ever voted to overrule local government on any of their land use decisions. I have a lot of other stuff about how horrible the Legislature was, but I'm going to skip that. Let me go quickly to the transportation. As you know, the transportation surtax passed with over 60% of the vote. It's not going to change everything overnight, but it will be bringing in a lot of money. I can tell you that the single biggest complaint I have received from my constituents is traffic. And I think if there's a lot of things that this will do, including, obviously, if there's an improvement on I-75 that helps Southwest Ranches, if there's an improvement on Flamingo that helps Southwest Ranches, even though neither of those are in your town, but there are also a number of roadway traffic improvements. I will have these maps. If you want, I can leave them with you now, on all of the improvements that are supposed to be funded from the county's surtax. And this is also a list, and if you go to our website and click on these little stars, there's about, I don't know, 15 of them, these are city-proposed improvements, because the county has set aside about 10% of that money directly for city improvements. So, Josh, can you give these to the clerk? So, I'll leave these with you. And again, if there are questions next Wednesday, when I'm having the Assistant County Administrator, who is in charge of this program, she can answer your questions to much greater degree than I can. Radio towers. Again, you may have been following the county's battle with Hollywood. I have tried my best to show deference to the local city. I can't in this situation, this is not a zoning matter, the proposal that they have made, and I do not understand why they're so adamant about this. I understand the neighbors right by the park, at West Lake Park, don't want to see a radio tower there. So, the city is trying to go along with what their constituents want, but what they don't realize, or have been ignoring, is they are, experts have said, if you put the radio tower on top of the circ, that there's a large number of people in Hollywood, everything within, everybody within 1,700 feet of the circ, as well as a growing area, which increases the further it goes out. So, by the time you reach Hallendale, it's all of Three Islands. It's all, everything in Hallendale from 14th Avenue, I don't know if you know where that is, but east to, pretty much, the intra-coastal, would be receiving substandard 911 coverage. And, you know, if it was a financial thing and they were trying to help the city, I could be willing to spend a couple of dollars more to make residents happy, but I am not prepared to take an action that will compromise public safety. We've tried to work with them. They brought in an expert who had never actually visited the building. He wrote a report without ever having been to the building and without ever having constructed a, this type of P-35 project, although he says, "Well, I've been involved in others." So, I'm a lawyer. I know how to weigh the sufficiency and credibility of experts and, you know, unfortunately, in this case, the one thing I am not willing to do is further delay the implementation of the 911 system. We've seen, we've had two major tragedies during my tenure on the County Commission, which was the airport shooting and the Douglas shooting. And we simply, we can't have MSD happen again. And the problems that we had, a lot of those were simply caused by inability of the radio system to function. We are going to go ahead and fix that. The last two issues I was going to talk about were affordable housing, and we do have an affordable housing crisis in Broward. Everybody wants low density, they want affordable, and they don't want sprawl. And you can't have those. You can have two of the three, any two, but you can't have all three. Well, in Broward County, we can't sprawl any further, because you go any further east, you get your feet wet. You go any further west, you get your feet wet. North and south are fully developed. So, the only solution, if we want affordability, is higher density. It is my belief that that higher density needs to be in areas that have trains, have mass transit, that's basically your eastern corridor along the two railroad tracks, maybe some along 595 as well, you know, depending, but that's where we need it, and I have been committed to preserving the characteristics of the neighborhoods where, again, Southwest Ranches, Davie, Cooper City, these generally are not areas that have the infrastructure to support high density. The last thing I wanted to talk about was the meeting I had today. When I was running for office, the first time, the Sun Sentinel said that I sounded like Rick Scott because I kept talking jobs, jobs, jobs. I did not take this as a compliment, because I said, "Look, where I differentiate this is you will never see me call a press conference when we're creating $11 an hour jobs." I happen to believe that one of the biggest issues facing this country is increasing income inequality, and I think one of the best ways of fixing that is creating more highly-paid jobs. I've been working very closely with the Broward Alliance, the school boards, the, I testified on this in Tallahassee, on the need for apprenticeships. If you look at today, the average, I mean, my air conditioning guy is 110 years old. That's a slight exaggeration, but not much. If you look at the electricians, the plumbers, the operating engineers, the electricians, their cohort is mostly in their 50s now, because we've taught everybody that you have to go to college to get a good job. Well, we should have been saying you have to have training to get a good job. That can include college, but it also needs to include plumbers, electricians, engineers, because without welders, without these, our business community is going to start coming to a halt, and these are the kind of highly-paid jobs that, you know, cannot be exported, cannot be outsourced to another country. These are the kind of solid, middle-class jobs that built this country. So, all of us have different issues. Commissioner Rich, or Senator Rich, who represents the area adjacent to me, she's known as the, you know, the biggest advocate perhaps in the county on homeless issues. What I've been working on are creating highly-paid jobs that, we had a working group today, have a group I've convened with about 30, 35 people there. We're working with the, to create the South Florida Marine Research Hub, thank you, which, when I think of where you can get high-paid, you know, where you can do marine research, first thing comes to my mind is Woods Hole, Massachusetts. In fact, South Florida, Dade, Broward, Palm Beach, has the largest concentration of university-based marine research in the nation. Not enough people know about that. That's the kind of highly-paid jobs that we can bring here. And I'm actually working on the lead for the county, working with Nova, on creating a business incubator at Nova. Again, high-paid jobs, I think, is the way to fix the, what I think is the income inequality. It's, I'm sorry, I meant to go for an hour and a quarter, but I'm done, but what I'd like to do now is answer any questions that any of you have, if you do have any.
Anyone, any questions?
If there are no questions, I just want to close by reminding you, next Wednesday at noon, at which park? Treetops Park, which is just a hop, skip and a jump from here, we're having, again, I'm providing lunch for, I've invited every city and county, excuse me, every city commissioner, every town councilperson, city attorneys and city managers in the seven cities I represent. So, if someone here has not, but I need to order the right amount of food. So, if any of you have not yet RSVP'd and you do want to attend, please contact my office. I know all of you have received invitations. There is anything that I can do, you know, the mayor has my cellphone and hasn't hesitated to call me on it. If there's anything that I can do to help the town, let me know. If you don't ask me, I had one of my mayors complain that I never helped her, and I said, "Have you contacted?" I've had these meetings, you haven't shown up at one of them, you've never called me once. I'm sorry, I'm not a mind reader. If you don't call me and tell me what you want, or show up at my meetings and tell me what you want, I don't know what you want. So, I'm here, I'm telling you, if there's something I can do to help you, let me know, and if it's something I can do, I will. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Steve, one other thing. If you all have one of your sponsorship things, give it to Steve, maybe he can find a way to help out, too.
Okay.
That's for the robotics team here that are...
I'll have to do something. My son, is this a, one of the VIX robotics? My son was, like, his team made the world championships, and when he was, he's up at Northeastern University. He spent the first year or two in high schools teaching people robotics, so I guess he'll have to do something.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Commissioner, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Awesome. Gladly. Will do. I'll see you next week.
If you have an RSVP, let us know.
All right, I'm going to interject one thing. If you'd do the roll call, please.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Here.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Awesome. Okay, now we have the Archbishop McCarthy National Rank and State Champion Robotics Team, so come on board.
My name is Steve Hennerin, and I'm the moderator for the Best Kept Secret in Southwest Ranches. That's the Archbishop McCarthy Mavic Robotics Team. And we're here tonight to tell you a little bit about our program, what we're all about, what we do and what we want to continue to do as we continue to build our program. To introduce what we're going to be doing tonight, I'd like to show you a little video clip, so I'm going to ask her if she can hit that back a couple of slides. The second slide.
They can only count to one. We can see it, you just can't.
Yeah, it's crazy. Need to fix it. Yeah, Andy, you're going to have to look into the, I mean, every meeting, we have a problem with our computer here for things, so that, I don't think that's the problem, but.
We can wing it, too, if we need to. No worries.
Steve, you know anything about this? By the way, if you would choose, you could take the mic out of that holder and slide that out of your way, if you would.
That would be nice. That's my teaching style.
Okay. So, that's on wheels, that whole thing will roll right out of the way.
Or you can beat the robot.
So, I can talk back and forth to everybody?
You can do whatever you want.
Throughout my four years in robotics, I've discovered my passion for engineering and figured out that I want to become a mechanical engineer when I'm older. I've also learned how to work with a team. Looking back on it, it's shown me a lot about myself. It's shown me how to communicate with people. I met a lot of my friends through there. Definitely, over the past three years, it's been a big part of my life, and I'm going to hold on to that forever.
Getting the opportunity for just even a small amount of time, to spend time with people who one day will be our leaders in industry, technology, science, developing the new companies that will lead America into the 21st century.
Well, robotics has been a big part of my life for the past few years of high school. It's helped me make a lot of new friends that I'm glad to say I'll have them for a lifetime. They have become some of my best friends ever, and it's helped me become a more confident person in general. Since my freshman year of high school, I have become a lot more well-known around the school, as well as the VEX community, and it's helped me believe in myself a lot more.
That's our full team there, by the way. We have a few representatives here. A little loud, isn't it? So, as you can see, we have quite a large team there, 35 team members. We have seven competitive robots that we use when we compete in the local, regional, statewide, global competitions that we participate in. Matt, can you slide that one more head? All right, so a little bit about the history of our program first. We started our Mavic Robotics program back in 2013, and it's kind of born out of, there's a national crisis going on, and I can, like, piggyback off of what Commissioner Geller said a few minutes ago. In STEM, everybody's heard it on the news, but all of us that are similar in age, we learned math and science the same way, didn't we? Do these practice problems in the book. Do this programming assignment, turn it in. There was, there was nothing to it, right? Robotics takes learning and completely flips it over. Albert Einstein once said, he said, "I don't teach my students, I provide them the environment to learn." And that's what robotics does. It completely flips the whole entire learning experience. These students here, those 35 people there that you saw on the clip a second ago, will do things for robotics that they wouldn't do for anything else. They will spend hours and hours and hours to program something for 15 seconds, that if it was given as an assignment for schoolwork, they would be like, "Ugh." They would spend hours and hours. And I have the proof. I have boards covered with calculations, hours of physics calculations that had been given as a homework assignment, but to beat university school down the street, there's your motivation. Okay, so we started that program in 2013. In those six years, we've won four state championships. We've been to the world championship five times. We've won every single award you can imagine that the VEX community provides. This last year and the year before, we won the sportsmanship award at the world championship. Last year, we made it to the quarterfinals of the world championship, which is a very big deal, because it's a huge event. And aside from the competition, which is a nice aspect of it, and I'll explain how that all ties in in a second, we also like to provide back to the community, so we're going to talk about that as well today. Can you advance that slide one more? So, I want to talk a little bit about the program first. Like I said, we have a national crisis. In 2007, the VEX robotics competition was established as a call to arms for the country. Like, we've got to do something different. The kids have to learn the math and science better. They've got to be challenged to do it. They can't just be given worksheets, math problems, practicing their workbooks and their textbooks. They're not going to, they're not going to want to do that. So, something that's reinforcing to them. Bring in competition. Competition changes everything. The VEX robotic platform is the largest competitive robotics platform in the world. There are over 24,000 teams right now globally, and it is global. At the world championship, we even have a parade of nations. There was 60 different countries represented this year, everywhere, the four corners of the globe, they're there. We have over 500 teams in the state of Florida right now, so it's very, very big and intense. We have a great program in the state of Florida right here. Each year, there's a new engineering challenge that's presented to the world. And then, as soon as the challenge is revealed, and you have to, to understand what that is like, it's like a rock concert, the night of, on the world championship, the Saturday afternoon in the finals, they'll present the new game, and the kids will be running for their lives to get a seat, to watch this, to see this two-minute video clip on this game, because they know that's what they're going to be doing for the next entire year of their lives, is coming up with a solution. In years past, we've gone to Worlds, and on the flight home, they're already working on the next robot. And so, it's not something they can, they'll work on and solve and be done with it. It's a continuous process that, that's what, that's what the difference is. That's where the motivation comes from, to be the best. And to be the best, you have to be the best at math, you have to be the best at math and science, you have to be the best at programming. So, it ties all that in together. I've never seen that, and I've been teaching 27 years. This is the purest form of teaching I do. And these kids will do things that you will not see them do anywhere else. The intrinsic level of motivation that they have is overwhelming. And the difference, again, it's the competition element that changes everything. It's the only thing I know where kids will get mad at you if you want to leave at the end of the night, because they want to be there. I can't complain about that. So, what I wanted to do was, rather than listen to me, I could talk all night, you'll have to stop it. And Mr. Dean, our principal, could tell you that when they bring the kids in the room, is, "I'd rather let you hear from the students themselves and what the experience has been like for them over the last several years." So, I'm going to, I have each one of these students here, and they're going to talk a little bit about a different aspect of the program. Could you advance the slide one? The first thing we're going to do is we're going to talk a little bit about the games. And to do that, I'm going to bring up Lucas Gandarilas. He's a junior, and he's going to be a senior member of our team next year, so we're hoping he's going to be carrying on the leadership next year. And he's going to tell you a little bit about the element of the games itself and what it means.
Hello, and, well, basically, each and every year, VEX comes out with a new game. And those two games there, they have, like, really no correlation at all between them. And that's so that each and every year, the robots cannot be reused, or like, so basically, teams from the past year, we haven't really, like, taken advantage of the less teams that really didn't do well in that, in the year before. And, yeah. So, that robot there, I mean, it's amazing.
You can bring it out in a second. She's going to roll it out in a second. Why don't you tell a little bit about the game we played this year?
So, this year's game, it was, it involved having to shoot balls with flywheels and other mechanisms, and you had to flip flags in order to score points and climb platforms in order to score points, and whoever basically scored the most points won. And this year's game includes lifting systems and blocks, say, that stack on top, and really nothing related to that from last year's game. And, yeah.
So, the, you can see, I juxtapositioned the two games here, last year's game and this year's game, and you can see the difference. So, they have to completely start all over again, come up with a brand-new solution and work through it for the whole season. And that's one of the things I really love about VEXs. That robot will change five, six, seven times during the year, as they learn how to play the game. They continue to learn, compete against other teams, lose, win, and they'll continually improve their robots. Now, these are task-oriented robots. These are not BattleBots. I know some of you are familiar with those. We did BattleBots years ago, and that was a lot of fun, and I always thought this stuff would be boring when I first started, I started it in 2010. But then, when I appreciated the level of sophistication and complexity that goes into these games here, playing two minutes, the matches are, two against two, two teams versus another two, of partners you don't even know who they are, so the kids have to strategize with these teams and then play a game at a level of intensity that we could not possibly process, but they can. So, I want to bring up now, could you move that next slide? Kyle Ford, one of our senior team members here, he's going to tell you about our world champion robot right here, and how he came up with the solutions with his team for the game we played this year.
All right. Hello, I'm Kyle Ford. I'm the captain of Team...
I'm the captain of Team 7121A, one of the teams that, here at McCarthy. And I just want to start off by saying that this last year has been the best year of my entire life. Not because it's my senior year in high school, but because of VEX. The people that I've met during this year have changed my life. Before this year, I had a lot of friends or whatever, but I had never had friends that I really connected with this much. Throughout the year, we basically talked about a design for this robot to play this game that we have this year, non-stop. Like, we would be in class and we would just be talking about everything, every little thing about the robot for the entire day. Like, we just ignore the class sometimes, but... And like everyone else would be like so intense on the lectures and everything, and I'd just be on my phone, just like hiding my phone, just trying to come up with new ideas and stuff. But yeah, that was really fun. But anyways, so this robot is what we call a flywheel robot. It shoots balls, grabs balls, it drives around, and it can also flip the caps, I don't know if you have a picture of those or anything, but, just give me one second.
So like I said, this year's game, they had a wall of flags that they had to shoot, they weren't allowed to touch them with the robot. So they had to create a flywheel device like this that could shoot the balls. And let me tell you, those balls come out at considerable speed, that's why, we didn't actually bring any of the game pieces because honestly, we didn't want to hurt anybody here today. He actually has, including me. So we, we only brought the robot to demo, but, so there was the wall, if you go back one slide, I'll actually, I can reference that so they can understand the game. So you can see on the top there, there's a wall of flags underneath the word "games", and each one of those flags has to be turned in a certain direction, but they're not allowed to touch it. The only way they can do that is creating some type of device that can shoot balls to hit it. So he created this here, the flywheel, you want to talk about it or?
Alright, so, you can see this here spinning really fast. You can't really appreciate how fast it's spinning until a ball goes through it, but like, like he said, we can't really fire it in here because I'm afraid we break a picture. But one time in one of the competitions, we had a misfire basically because we just had too many balls at once. Then it came out of the flywheel and it was aimed directly at the referee and hit him right in the head. It knocked his glasses off and he started bleeding, and I was talking to him during the match, apologizing while I was driving the robot. And on top of that, our ally was disconnected, and so I was literally one v two, that was a very interesting time. So yeah, and then we also have this piece right here, which is, what's that? Oh no, I want to show it. So this is what's called the scraper. If you notice on the game field, there are certain caps, they're like on the ground, they have balls on top of them. This would go down during our autonomous period where the robot moves all by itself basically. And then it would just grab the balls off the cap so that we could maximize our score during the autonomous period. It also is a, we call it the multi-tool, because it also is capable of flipping caps, which is also a way of scoring in the game, as well as flipping them like in every direction. So like, if I were to back up, it would flip it, if I were to lift up, it flips, and yeah, and get them out of corners and stuff. And the one thing that we really like about this robot is different from a lot of robots. It had, you see how there's like three flags in the columns if you look at the picture? You can toggle the bottom ones by running into them, which is why we have these here. But the two top ones, you are not allowed to expand to hit them, you have to hit them by shooting them with balls. But our robot was capable of shooting two flags at once from the same spot. It would simply fire one ball, and then we have it in the code. I could try it out now, but it might be weird. So, it was really hard to tell because it's so fast, but basically it'll fire the first ball at full speed, but then it reverses the motors for literally five milliseconds, and then fires the second ball out and it'll hit both flags at once. It's a really instant action, but a lot of teams had to just shoot the top flag, drive forward, hit the middle flag. So this was really advanced, and it was what set us apart from a lot of teams during this competition. And in fact, the first time that we fired this flywheel, we were at school at like six o'clock. We were saying we're gonna leave around four or something, but then I just, we got in the zone basically. And then we were like, we're not leaving till this thing fires and hits a flag. And then the first time we shot it, it hit him right in the head. Yeah, I can't say he was upset about that though, because it felt so, like it was so hard, he got like a welt, but, but yeah, that was fun times. And one last thing I want to say, during the competitions, it's really crazy because, oh let me just turn this off real quick. The, the amount of determination it takes to win a competition is crazy. Because you not only have to make a robot that can do all the actions, you have to make one that can survive throughout the entire competition. Because you can make a robot that'll work absolutely perfect for the first match, and then by the end of the competition, won't be able to do a single thing. So if you notice on this robot, if you touch it from even up here, the entire thing moves. That's because the amount of bracing it has basically supports the entire robot from any spot. This is what allowed us to be ran from like any direction on the robot and not damage anything on the robot. The only reason it does work properly all the time is because it is so well-structured, which is only something I would learn through VEX. I would not learn this in school or anywhere else, because basically in like one of my first years, I noticed that stuff would just bend over time or shift, and it would just cause a lot of issues. And you can only learn things like that through experience. And so yeah, and then also to win a competition, you just have to have a lot of practice and just knowing your people. If you know your people really well, you'll get around really good. And by making connections, you'll have some good friends to discuss ideas with and hopefully win some tournaments.
He's like me, you can't stop him talking once he gets going. So I, I wanted to share a little bit more about the program. Can you, move to the next slide? So there's a couple of things, it's not just the robot, the robot is only one small part of the program. In fact, most of them when they leave VEX, when they get onto, into college, they don't continue with VEX even though there's a college program. What they learn is so much of the life skills that go into the stuff that is about VEX. And so I'd like to bring up, Ali, you'll talk for a few minutes, Alejandro Rios, about the communication aspect of it.
Hi, I'm Lauren Rodriguez, I've been doing VEX for four years. So we're gonna talk about like the little, the communication that we've learned from VEX. And actually like a fun fact of this photo, right there in the floral shirt, that's Dave Lavery, and he actually works for NASA. And at my first Worlds, I actually got to meet him and like have conversations with him, and we actually got to even try one of the NASA's new technology with him. And that's just an example of the people that we've met through VEX and the connections that we can make. And just besides that, VEX has taught me personally so much about communication. One of the elements of our tournaments is that actually, when you compete, it's four robots on the field. So you have a partner robot and you also go against two other robots. So the person that you meet, you, the person that you're gonna work with changes every single match, and you don't know who that's gonna be. So when you get your match list in the morning at like nine, ten hopefully, depending on how that tournament's running, that's the first time you're gonna know who you're gonna work with that day. And so you have to go around and meet all those people, communicate with them, and figure out how you're going to compete in that match. So VEX not only teaches you how to build and program and all of these things, but you also have to be able to work with people on the spot and come up with strategies.
Yeah, and a quick side note on that, the thing about robotics is that every team, what you notice is not everybody's doing the same thing. We have seven competition robots, but in each team you have like six people, five, five people. But not all five are building on the robot. And so each person has a specific role, some people are programmers, some people are builders, some people are journalists, like Lauren works on the journal, and she's a builder. And so some people do multiple things at once. And so with each of your roles, you have to learn how to communicate your role with your team as well as communicating it with the teams that you are allying with, so.
And one other thing I want to mention as far as...
Your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Alex Diener, and I'm part of Team 7121A with Ali and Lauren. And another interesting part about it is, like Miss H mentioned before, like robotics is like basically giving you the environment to learn stuff about STEM. But it's not only just STEM, it doesn't only teach you how to build a robot and so and so on. Another interesting part of the competition is, there are judges and they go around and they interview every team. So these interviews, they, they're very helpful because they will help you in the future. For example, if you have a job interview, it'll teach you how to be well-spoken, it'll show you how to hold a conversation with another person. And it's little things like that in the, as far as the VEX program goes, where it doesn't just focus on STEM and like those applications, but it also step-branches out into as far as communication and people skills and other important things that you will need in life.
Now, as Ali mentioned a second ago, we have five members on each team, and each person has a distinct job. We have traditionally a driver, we have some builders, we have a journalist who keeps the, the engineering design journal, which is a humongous part of the whole process, and then we also have a dedicated programmer. These are the guys that work behind the scenes, then they do hundreds of hours of stuff for fifteen seconds of programming at the beginning of each match. But the championships are won at that particular moment in time. So I'm gonna bring Ali back up again for a second, if you can slide that next slide there, she'll tell you a little about this part.
So along with having the different roles in robotics, what the programmer does is that, in the way that, in the game shows, it's not just the driver who is controlling the robot, sometimes you have an autonomous portion, which is basically where the robot works on its own. It's the fifteen-second autonomous in which it's supposed to get as far as it can in the game solely on its own, and that's what you practice for hours on end in the room. And then you get to the, you get to the match, and it's fifteen seconds and it's over. And it either worked or it didn't. And that's one of the satisfying things about the programming. And so one of the other things is like, you have to be able to communicate with your team and figure out a plan as to what you want to achieve in the autonomous, and then build off of that when you have an actual competition.
Is your pit crew your builders?
Well, the thing about the pit crew is that we really do, when we say team, we mean it, we work like a family. And so it's not just each person does a little job and that is all that they're supposed to do. You communicate and you decide things as a team. So like with programmers, you have to have a bot, kind of like Kyle's bot has a flywheel. You have to be able to program a flywheel to do what it's supposed to do. A certain button makes it go forward at the speed, a certain button makes it go this, sometimes you have a button that does an automatic function. And so, you have to be able to understand what your builders want to have in a match and see how can you, how can you use it to your advantage in the autonomous portion. So if they have a bot that has six wheels or four wheels, what does that mean to you as a programmer? What do you want it to do? How do you want it to work with the driver control mode? How do you want it to work in the autonomous portion? And if something goes wrong, sometimes it's a building issue, sometimes it's a programming issue, and you kind of have to be able to figure out like, how can you fix this problem that showed up in the, in the competition?
So you all actually write software for this robot?
Yes, we actually have up, do you want to talk about V5? Okay, because with this updated version of VEX, there's a multitude of languages that exist. And one of the languages that we worked on for years was Robot C, which was, you write the software itself, and they've upgraded now to C++ and what's the other one that, ProS and DC, so all these other languages. And so you're able to branch out into multiple versions of programming in different languages and see what works for you, what works for your team, and what fits most for your bot.
Do you, let me ask you something, do you have a, a program where they give you so you know what's coming, that you practice for? Or is it just you go to competition, they have so many things set up for you to do, they explain the rules of it, and then you go?
Well, the way that it works is that since you already know things in advance, everything you work on is at home. That's why we spend hours and hours in our field, and then we just test it, and you still have to be able to maintain that in the actual matches when you have the three other robots in the field with you.
Right, but you do know what's coming, I mean, it's not like you just go up there blind. Is it timed? Do you have a time? It's a two-minute match?
With the fifteen-second autonomous at the very beginning.
Just a quick question, what, what OS and system do you guys use?
For the programming?
Yeah.
We, our, our, this, this robot uses ProS to write it. And for the past years before this year, we worked with Robot C a lot.
That's the developmental language?
Yes.
It's Windows? And the machine itself, the robot as well runs on Windows? Okay. Gotcha.
So whatever you write in code just has to be able to transfer it into its own language?
And okay, that one more slide there. So just a couple last little things I want to mention, as you can tell already, I believe firmly in this program. So what else do we do besides the competition aspect is we reach out to the community? We have a lot of different things we do, not just within the private school sector, but within Broward County. So I'd like to bring up Lauren again, a little bit, tell us a little bit more about what we do besides competing on the Saturdays.
Hi again, so this is really important to me because this is actually how I got started in VEX. The year before my freshman year, I signed up for the summer camp, I actually signed up because my brother did robotics before me here at Archbishop. So my parents signed me up kind of because he did it, and I showed a little bit of an interest in it. And honestly, when I first started and the days before coming into this summer camp, I wasn't really sure if robotics was gonna be for me. I'm a little bit of a girly girl, and so I wasn't really expecting the whole building robotics thing to really fit with me. But I can tell you, the moment that I started building, I absolutely fell in love with it. And it's actually what I've decided to pursue in my future, I'm gonna study mechanical engineering at UCF. And I've decided that completely from this, and that all started from our summer camp. So it's one of our big outreach programs that we have, a summer camp that we host every summer. Some years it's just one week, sometimes we do two weeks, and it's completely run by the students and the members of the team. So all of us here have counseled this summer camp. And the kids come in, some of them have done years before, some of them know a little bit about robotics, but some of them come in just like I was, and you, they know absolutely nothing about robotics. And by the end of the week, by that Friday, the kids have completely built a robot on their own and compete against each other. And it's amazing to be able to be a part of that and give back to the community and teach them what we've learned. It's, there's nothing like seeing those kids at the end of the week with those completed robots competing when they started out on Monday knowing absolutely nothing about robotics. Besides the summer camp, VEX has given grants to some of Broward County public schools, and we've decided to get involved in helping these schools that have received these grants. So we've hosted, or I guess we've hosted some of them at our school, and they've come into our robotics room, and the members will stay later those days as well as Mr. H. And different teachers who have these programs in the public schools come into our room, and we basically answer all their questions. Normally, they've come in with like problems they're experiencing already. So they'll come in and tell us about a prob, problem or a program that's not working, and our programmers and builders will work with them to help fix their problems and teach them what we know. We've also run a tournament for all of them because it's difficult to throw these new kids who know absolutely nothing about robotics into our tournaments. Our tournaments are really, really competitive, really intense, and it's very difficult to throw someone in there who knows absolutely nothing. So there was a tournament that was hosted, and it was mainly these public schools who were brand-new to VEX. And they all came in and competed against each other, and we hosted the whole thing. We did everything from reffing to scorekeeping to just going around the tables and teaching them, you know, oh, you have to have your license plates on and your batteries in, and all the different little things about a tournament that they may not know they need.
What does one of these cost to, from start to finish? How much money are you talking to build one of these? Yes. Now, do they come in a kit form, or do you all have all these pieces and you kind of say, "I need those parts, I need these parts," and?
Exactly, that's exactly, the only difference is, we have, to keep the platform level and the playing field even, we all have to purchase from the same, we all have to purchase the same type of motors, the same type of metal and stuff, and then from there we have to frame a little bit.
Yeah, but we get absolutely no instructions, there's no like pre-formulated kits or anything like that. We come up with the designs completely on our own in our teams. It's completely student-based, the students come up with the design completely on their own, and from metal and nuts and bolts and... And from metal and nuts and bolts and electronics, we build these robots, you know, from the ground up.
Trial and error.
Yes, a lot. Blood, sweat and tears.
Audience has a question back there.
Summer camp we run is from sixth to eighth grade, middle school. Yes, sir? Well, we're not allowed to within the parameters of the competition that we do. But we have had the students that have done it before. We had a student a few years ago who, you probably saw her on the news. She took a VEX robot and made it completely mind-controlled. She actually did a TED Talk on it. It was pretty spectacular. So that was our only delve into artificial intelligence. We're pretty much primarily bound by the rules for the competition. So we kind of stick to those. Yep, this is the stepping stone for those careers later for them.
Awesome.
And if you could just direct your attention, I just want to show you these, a couple of pictures from our world championship we just got back from here a few weeks ago in Louisville. Had a great time there with a couple thousand of our closest friends from around the globe. And we represented the Southwest Ranches area quite well. Our teams from Florida can go against any teams in the world, I'll tell you right now. And so now, why are we here? That's the last bit. We wanted to talk a little bit about all that. But I think you can understand now how firmly we believe in the program. And we have the most supportive administration you can imagine. Mr. Jean, Mr. Milner, the school is fantastic. We have equal treaty. It's not like when we were in school again, oh, the nerds on their electronics. We have banners up and down the hallway, just like all the sports teams. These guys are like, the level of respect they get is awesome. And so we want to continue to keep growing the program and getting it out to the community. Continue to invest in the electronics and stuff because this operation is very expensive. So we were looking now to turn to the community a little bit to get some sponsorships to keep the program going and sustain, allow us to keep growing outreach into the community. Getting the younger ones, because actually there's a, besides VEX, there's also VEX IQ. They go all the way down to the elementary school now. So it's a great solution to the problem we talked about a while ago. Getting them excited when they're small and keep it going. And then for all my kids, I've been doing this now since 2005. And I've, in that period of time, I've produced hundreds of engineers, scientists, doctors, pilots, just from robotics.
Who would be our contact through you all to reach out? Andy Burns, give him the information.
Oh, yes. I have some flyers that we've created. And Miss French, we put them back there. And then I'll leave them here also for you guys. I can bring them up.
Okay, you can leave some on the back table back there.
She's got some back there, yes.
And then afterwards, what we'll do is we'll put them at the front desk here. But I'll tell you, I'll contribute a hundred dollars. So just as a heads up. So I don't have it with me right now, but I'll get it to you in the next day or so.
Thank you very much. And on behalf of the team here, I'd like to thank you. Oh, yes, sir.
No, I don't think so.
Well, thank you very much. Nope, we're these other beginning steps. Well, thank you very much for those kind words there. Yeah, Miss French, we're working on that now. These are, this is our first foray. Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
All right.
Well, thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Congratulations on your achievements.
So as you all progress, or you all graduate and move on and the younger ones behind you coming up, feel free to come back and see us and talk to us. And kind of tell us what you're doing and where you're at, so.
And work on them dishes. Especially, especially the dishes.
Yeah, sure.
We'll do a picture with the team?
Yeah, we'll go down front here. We'll line up and we'll get a picture with you all.
It's his camera. He was worried about George running off.
Tired. Yeah, good night. Listen, you all don't have to stick around. You're welcome to leave. Not a problem.
Thank you. That was very interesting, guys.
Yeah, thank you again. Appreciate it. Public comment. How many speakers do we have?
We have three, but do they really want to speak tonight?
I guess they do.
You're up.
You're up.
John Eastman's second and Jim Lasky's third. And then we have as surprise guest, David Kozinski came in late, you know?
Noel Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. Again, I'd like to ask the council to stick their two cents into crosswalks for the equestrian lights. I spoke with Commissioner Geller tonight. And I think Bob is going to take point on this. And I see his head going up and down. It's either the doggy in the back window or yes, he is, one of the two.
Yes, I am, Noel.
Okay. So I'm just going to leave it at that. But I would like for all of you to give your support to Bob so he can go into the meeting and say the council is 100% for crosswalks, equestrian crosswalks. So we do not have this where Davy cannot cite the person who kills horses and injures our residents, our people who are in our town riding horses because there is no crosswalks and they were illegally jaywalking across the road, the horses. Even though there was signs that said horse crossing right there. And has been for years. So I'd like for the town council, if they would, please give their support to Bob, either by a letter, sign or whatever. Thank you.
I'll be present.
Good evening, Council. John Eastman, 188th Avenue. I'll be brief tonight. I just wanted to touch base on our lighting ordinance. We've had a lot of facilities that have ignored it. And we've had some issues with building issuing permits for lighting that was non-compliant. These issues are being worked through. But the latest trend is I see a lot of house flippers coming in rehabbing houses. And they put a lot of fixtures all over the house. And the places are really getting lit up at night with prison-type lighting, with these bright white LEDs. And unfortunately, the lighting is not welcome on the neighbor's property. And maybe we could start out with an educational approach in our newsletter. That's the easiest thing to do. And just get everybody a background. Look, if you can see the element burning on a bulb, the filament, then you need to do something about it. It should not be able to be visible off your property. We need shielding. If you go, some of those dock lighting fixtures that you've seen them, the round green ones, they got the little shades on them. If you back up 100 feet, you can't see the bulb burning, but yet they illuminate the area. And you know, we need to do that with our homes. If you have a lamp on the side of your house, it should be shielded so that you're lighting your property, but not your neighbor's. And I'm a beekeeper and I lose a lot of bees to the church across the street because the bees are attracted to that lighting at night. And I lose tens of thousands, big counts. They can't find their way back home. And they just sit around those high-intensity lamps buzzing until they die. And we have other wildlife in the area that's not real happy with the lighting either. So let's keep it rural and do whatever you can. Educate the people first and then, you know, maybe we can modify our code a little bit if we need to strengthen it. Thank you.
All right, stay put. Hold on, don't go anywhere. You can turn the clock off on him. Anyhow, a different question. I want to ask you about the FAA sound stuff and where we are on that.
Okay, the FAA has--
He sits on the board for, tell them what you sit on for us.
Okay, every so often, Fort Lauderdale International is required by the FAA to conduct a noise study and help to alleviate noise around the airport and be better neighbors. So that study's been underway now for the past couple years. And we're coming to the end of it. We've had five meetings so far and there's going to be a sixth meeting this month. And it'll conclude it with some recommendations to help eliminate the--
Make sure I know what that is when I attend.
I'll copy you on it. I think I already sent it to Andy.
Okay.
But anyway, the meeting has progressed. And the one thing I do want to bring to the council is that the projected numbers are just going to continue increasing. You know, as Steve just said, you know, the density is increasing in the area. So more people want to fly. The cruise industry is doing very well. We bring in a lot of people. So Fort Lauderdale, about five years ago, improved the south runway. You know, they extended it. And if you go there, they've got a bridge over US-1. So now the larger aircraft are able to use that. The 150 studies the patterns of noise as they're making their approaches in and they're departing outward. And we'll be making recommendations to minimize it so that, you know, one neighborhood isn't being tortured all the time. The people that live in the tight ring around the airport, unfortunately, they're kind of stuck with it. But they did include our areas out west here. Weston, Davie, and Southwest Ranches. And I think Cooper City was included. They didn't have to be, but they invited us into their study. And you know, I was looking at it and we've got two approaches when you're landing east, the north runway and now the south runway. And the approach for the north runway, which is the oldest ILS approach, has aircraft crossing basically Bonaventure at 2,500 feet. And with them coming every minute and a half because of the increased volume and then the further volume into the future, it's really become an annoyance. So I've been pushing for what's called a controlled rate descent where basically you come in from high altitude and you just do a power-off descent where you're just simply gliding right to the runway. And everybody seems to understand the concept, but getting the FAA to redesign the approaches is a little more difficult. And I'll continue pushing that. The bad news for us right here for the next six months or so, the north runway is going to be closed for repaving. They're going to completely redo it. So we are going to get all of the instrument approach traffic over Southwest Ranches for about six months. And there's really nothing we can do about it. It's just the way it is. The good news is, is that the ILS approach for the south runway over our community, they have them at 4,000 feet on that approach. So it won't be quite as bad as the folks in Weston get all the time. But the next Part 150 meeting will be the wrap-up meeting. And I'll come back to the council and give you the recommendations that were put in. But looking at future forecasts, we're just going to have a lot more flyovers. And we're going to see more traffic utilizing the south approach over Southwest Ranches. And it's real important to get those controlled rate descents put into effect. They're kind of a new thing that's been around about the past 10 years. But it really increases efficiency and the airlines desperately want it. So you know, if you can make an approach with your throttles all the way back, you're not making a lot of noise on the neighborhoods and it's keeping that down.
All right, well, let us know if there's anything we need to do or pass a resolution.
Great, thanks Doug. And thanks for going to that last one.
Listen, absolutely. I'm there. If I need to be there, I'll be there, so.
Hey Doug, what's on here? I got a question for you.
Sure.
There's been discussion around the country on redesigning the above Class B, I guess it's Class A airspace, where the inbound and departing for all the major airports collects and goes out. I know they just stopped that in San Francisco. So they're trying to redesign it so that it's more automated, requires less air traffic controllers. Has there been any discussion on that for this area?
The, all the new aircraft are coming with communications onboard that communicate directly with ATC. And it's coming to the point where the autopilots are going to be taking commands from the ground controllers. You know, we'll see the information that come in on our screen instead of having to talk to them on the radio. And the efficiency and the climbing and descent profiles are programmed into the FAA system. So you know, there won't be a lot of step descents and step climbs.
Like ILS.
You know, you come in, you land, you take off, you go. And the Florida traffic complex is extremely complicated because we have so many airports and so much north-south traffic. And now, you know, a lot of South American stuff comes in from the islands. So it's extremely complex airspace. We do have a couple of controllers that are on this board as well that live in the area. And you know, they've been valuable with their input, so.
But what I'm referring to is it looked, from the documentation I saw, and I think it was the Sentinel or the Herald back a few months ago, they're doing figure eights, figure sixes or figure nines. And they all seem to intersect over Southwest Ranches on arrival and departure. And like I said, out in California, they've gotten them to stop that because it's going to put everybody over our heads on, you know, mostly departures, which is when they're, to me, the most noisy. But have, was that part of the discussions with the FAA or is that independent?
Yeah, this board I'm working on is strictly Fort Lauderdale. Now, the meeting the FAA had a couple of weeks ago that the mayor attended, that has to do with the entire airspace system of the state being redesigned.
Right.
And they've already redesigned all the offshore Atlantic routes. We went through that about a year ago. So everything's getting a revamping. It's all geared toward tighter restrictions on, separations are going to be tighter to fit more airplanes. But we also have more safety because the systems now, we have redundancy and backup. And we have a lot of warning systems if something goes wrong. But they are, the sky's very crowded now. And getting people in and out of all these different airports in the state is a chore. And the old system just wasn't doing it. So you know, they're finally getting this modernization going. And you know, it may take a few more years. But I see it every day. It's coming. And we have a real big learning curve with it.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Greatly appreciated.
Thanks, public speaker Keith.
Sorry, I called them before. Jim is next. And then the final speaker is David.
Yep. Jim Lasky, 5780 Southwest, 188th Avenue. First, I'd like to begin with apologizing for blowing up on you guys the last meeting. That was uncalled for. But I've been coming extremely frustrated with this project that's going on next door to me. And I've sent a letter to the town engineer because I finally found out he is the person responsible for surveys and, you know, evaluating surveys for whatever. And that's where my focus is. And that's where my focus is on the survey that I received. I think I received the wrong one. Because the only benefit to this survey, if I'm not incorrect, is it only benefits the placement of a drain field. A drain field which the standards changed in July of 2018. And lo and behold, in the same month is when an update was filed, okay, for benefiting the drain field. I don't see any electric running in. I don't see any easements for drainage. Nothing on this survey, but indications that it only benefits that one drain field. Because you're going to, the permit has since been revoked by the Health Department, and I don't have the background on why. I would like to know why. I requested the documents from the Health Department. Maybe some of you people can help me. It'd be a very interesting thing to look into.
We're looking into it, and we'll follow it up.
Okay.
All right, great.
Well, again, I apologize for blowing up, but really, this is serious stuff. And when you read 64E-6 of the new regulations effective in 2018 July, okay, you're going to see what I'm talking about. A cypress knee now qualifies as a flood mark. Yeah. My next-door neighbor happens to be a biology guy for the Mikisuki Indians. He knows all about, because I was asking, what motivates these cypress knees to grow? High water. So they've actually written that into the new standards. So I think our septic systems in Southwest Ranches are going to be under a lot more scrutiny or in the future than they have been. Thank you.
David Kozinski, 6411 Hollaty Trail, speaking on behalf of the Sunshine Ranches Homeowner Association. At our next meeting on May 29th, our guest speaker is going to be Jeff Dorian, who is the chapter leader of the Broward County Citizens Climate Lobby. He's going to speak to us about climate change. I'd like to invite everybody to come out. It's going to be a very interesting presentation. Second, yesterday, I learned that Ruth Wolf was in an unfortunate incident that involved her car ending up in a canal at Appaloosa and Sterling. I've been told she's okay, but Ruth is one of the founders of our, of our community, and she is truly a treasure. So keep her in your thoughts. Thanks.
Yep.
Awesome. Board reports, any board reports?
Good evening, Councilman George Morris, Chair of the Drainage Board. I just wanted to refresh you memory with regards to we're short a person. So I'm not sure how that's going to work, but we need to elect someone else. Thank you.
It's my pick. Any additional board reports? Seeing none. Councilmember comments? I'd like to, Gary, you want to go first?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everybody, for coming. As usual, just a few brief announcements to make and some commentary. We've got hazmat coming up on the 11th at Pembroke Pines and 172nd and Pines Boulevard. Just need to show your town ID. It's from 8:00 to 12:00, I believe, on Saturday. And then on the 13th of July, and you'll hear more about it, we have hazmat at the barn from 8:00 to 2:00 with shredding. And it's really great to utilize that service. Got old tires, you got batteries, you got fluorescent lights, whatever, whatever it is, paint, et cetera, motor oil. I urge everybody to recycle all this stuff properly. We have the Royal Arts Photo Contest coming up for this year. The theme for this year is "Life in the Ranches." The pictures must be submitted by August 15, 2019. And the specifications are on the town website if you want to go see it, or call Town Hall, and they'll be able to ask you for them. Town Hall's closed on the 27th in observance of Memorial Day. It's Monday, just want to make sure that gets mentioned. We've got the Flowmobile at Town Hall on 23rd. That's two weeks from today, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. If you have anything, DMV, driver's license, plates, registered renewals, utilize it if you're not utilizing it by mail or any other means. This coming Sunday is Mother's Day. Wish all the moms in the world a Happy Mother's Day. You know, it's your day, enjoy it. It's nationally recognized, and it's a great day. And one of the things I just wanted to mention at the very end, we just had, the Parks Board had bingo at the barn. Everything went very, very good. And I would like to give a really big shout-out to our caller, George Morris. He did a fantastic job. It was like he was born for this job. And I really, really want to just point this out. We had a really interesting moment on the very last game, and George came to the rescue, and I think he deserves some recognition for this. It turns out that there was, on the very last number called, there was a tie. And one hand shot up faster than the other, and then it became like a sticky wicket. And George, in 30 seconds, solved the problem by doing a personal contribution for the grand prize. And he diffused the situation that was growing. I was in the back, and I could see it coming up really quick, and he diffused it in a matter of seconds without any hand signals from me or anything like that. And I think he deserves some recognition for that. And he did a great job. I just want to, I just want to close with that. And George, believe me, the Blue Wall Retirement Home is looking for you. And so are the cruise ships. We've emailed all the cruise ships, and we got a new call.
He's got a second career.
Forget construction.
All right. He'd like to go next. Bob, too?
Just a couple of real quick things.
All right.
Happy Mother's Day. And between now and our next meeting, I believe, a lot of the schools are having graduation. I know West Broward is. My youngest one is graduating, which it's amazing, she's 18 already. But nothing else to say. Thank you.
Okay. Freddie, anything or no? You're good. Okay. Dee?
You're good. Okay. I'm going to say there's a variety of different projects that Mr. Burns and December Loretano have brought to my attention in the parks and different areas. I met with Kevin Hart this morning on some drainage issues. And we're going to be working closely with them. Keith's working on a waiver. Town has a waiver, but SBDD has their own waiver, and we're going to try to join on with that one. As far as helping people clear the banks of their canals and whatnot, SPD's a little short of money right now, but they said if we could get some volunteers to get some banks cleared, they would haul off the debris. So I may be reaching out to some residents to help get that done. So anyhow, so that's all looking good. And we're looking forward to getting some other things rocking and rolling. So obviously, it's budget season, and we'll all be having our meetings on those issues. And those of you that want any input, feel free to call on us and speak to us and let us know how you feel and what your thoughts are. Because if we don't know, we can't share it with the staff. So greatly appreciate it. So I'm good. How about legal comments? Keep your up-
Sure, Mayor, I'll be brief. Legislative session ended. Town is in the budget, knock on wood. Will get some of the funds that have been allocated for us. Over a half million dollars in projects this year, which were prioritized by the town. At the last minute, our EEOC was pulled out of the budget, but that just means it's a priority project for next year, so it goes back in as priority, which is not bad. We work diligently to try to get language in the Florida statutes to try to add an additional protection to maintain our sovereignty into the future. We created a bill, multiple bills actually, that had language that stated two things. One, one municipality cannot buy property in another municipality without that municipality's consent. And two, one municipality cannot de-annex another municipality without their consent. On the surface, it seems like logical and very supportive laws. Knowing that there's always issues in Tallahassee whenever you try to create good legislation, we had our friends at Pembroke Park run through the League of Cities. And the League of Cities came out and published on their website a policy statement saying that they support a municipality's right not to be de-annexed. Essentially what it said in general. So we thought, going into this legislative session, that we'd have the League of Cities support and all their help in power and firepower in Tallahassee. So we get to the House of Representatives, and they passed two versions of the language that I'm referring to and had no problem. We get to the Senate, and we get to one of the last days of the Senate, and our language goes in to the Senate bill, a pretty controversial Senate bill that we knew would be passed. So we get our language into the Senate bill, and two things transpired in the last 12 hours of the legislative session. One, the League of Cities came out in opposition to our language. Okay? Straight-out opposition to our language, despite the fact that their own website states that they're in support of our language. They came out in strong opposition of our language and started hammering the legislator, saying you can't put this in. So as a result of the League of Cities' opposition, and then all of a sudden, our friends at one of our neighboring cities, Pembroke Pines, decided to hire four lobbyists on the spot to defeat the language, including some notable lobbyists, Brian Ballard, Candace Erickson and others. So Pines assembled in the last day of the legislative session four lobbyists to also defeat our language. Why? You know, all we said is, "Don't buy property in another municipality without their consent," and "Don't de-annex them without their consent." There's nothing sinister about that language. You know, why? League of Cities came out with a whole position statement and a policy statement saying that the language on purchase of property would destroy municipalities because you couldn't buy property to put utilities. Utilities. So I went back to the League of Cities, and I said, "Well, why don't we exempt the out, you know, if you need to buy property to put in a utility?" Which I can't imagine a municipality objecting to either. "Well, no, we still have other objections. Why don't you tell us what they are?" "Well, we just can't tell you." Okay. So we have Pembroke Pines four lobbyists, the League of Cities lobbyists, and they start going after the Senate President, telling him, "You can't put this language in, you can't put this language in." So the Senate President calls one of our friends in the Senate who will, nameless, but a friend from Miami, because, you know, you can never use someone in Broward to help you in Southwest Ranches. So our friend in Miami had the language in the bill, but he/she was forced to withdraw the language from the bill. You can go online and figure out who I'm talking about. Okay? So she withdraws the language from the bill, and the town was left without the language going forward in the bill. So I quickly pick up the telephone and call our friends from Broward to see if they can help. So who are our friends in Broward? None of the senators that serve Southwest Ranches. I called Gary Farmer, okay? And Gary Farmer, who is a true friend and ally of Southwest Ranches, even though his district is, you know-
Thirty miles north.
Yeah, 30 miles north, maybe 40 miles north, nowhere near Southwest Ranches. But he would do everything to help this town and to preserve this community. So he immediately puts the language in the bill and proposes the amendment to amend the bill to state our language. Okay? He gets attacked. And I don't even mean attacked. He gets attacked. One of the Broward lobbyists who was hired by Pembroke Park, David Segerson, told me that he went to Farmer's office to thank him for putting the language in. And he said the line of lobbyists to attack him was wrapped around the wing of his office that they had to wait an hour to even see him because he was getting hit by Pines lobbyists after Pines lobbyists after Pines lobbyists. So what's the moral of the story? Unfortunately, the language did not get passed this year, but some really good things came out of it. One, there's not one person in the Senate who does not know the issues going on right now between Pembroke Pines and Southwest Ranches. They've all been educated, which is the first time ever that you could ask any legislator, and they know what the issues are. Two, clearly, by putting an aggressive lobbying team together at the 11th hour, which is incredibly expensive to do, shows certain motives that were anticipated for the following legislative session. So by bringing this issue to the forefront now, we've probably avoided a major issue next year, which is a good thing. Three, we now have a tremendous ally in Pembroke Park, who although a very small city as well, has very good connections at the League of Cities. And I can tell you, they are beyond furious that the League of Cities, who they went to every meeting and created a subcommittee on annexation, just for Pembroke Park, came out against the bill dealing with annexation that the League of Cities voted in favor of prior to the legislative session. It's just mind-boggling to me how that occurred. So it was a pretty decent legislative session. We didn't get a home run this year, unfortunately, but we did pretty well financially, and we've set ourselves up very good for next year, where we will continue to succeed. Two other issues just want to speak about briefly. One is ADA. This is why I don't like attorneys. Okay? All about the ADA. You know, I believe wholeheartedly in assisting those with needs and disabilities. I also believe wholeheartedly that there shouldn't be attorneys who gain their sole income by suing people based on ADA issues that are, to me, made up in many of the cases. So the town is hit with a made-up ADA issue. And then the town's going to have to decide what to do with it. So I'm going to just bring it to the council's attention, because most of them haven't heard this issue yet. There is a scheme going on with municipalities now, that you find someone who is sight impaired, and you have them send a letter to the municipality that says, "I can't read your website and the PDFs attached to your website because my screen reader doesn't have, your website doesn't have the accessibility for my screen reader." And under the ADA, you either totally revamp your website, or I'm suing you and you're paying all my fees, costs, lawyer fees, everything else. Okay? It's a scam. It's going on all the time right now to municipalities. So the town got that letter, you know, finally. We'd been dodging it for some time. And with that letter, they asked for all of Marty's budgets for the last five years. You know, someone nowhere near the town, by the way. Where was the individual located? Daytona Beach. Wants the town's budget for the last five years, every minutes for the last 10 years, every resolution ever adopted for the town. And because they want to read about the town of Southwest Ranches, and their screen reader isn't enabling them to read the town's website. Russell created a very nice letter back saying that we're looking into our screen reader. We need to know what version of screen reader they're using to figure out what the issue is. And Marty would be happy to read his budget on tape if they would like. True story. So at this point, why do I bring this to your attention? Two reasons. Russell now has to hire a company to do an audit of the town's website to determine what aspects of the website are not new screen reader compliant. And then thereafter, there's going to have to be an unbudgeted item before the council to revamp the entire website and all exhibits thereto, to make sure that they are fully accessible for all screen reader versions that have ever been created in America. Okay? This is coming up. This is how we do it. Second choice, two, remove the town's website completely, remove every document completely, and be totally closed off and not give any information at all, because by doing that, you comply with the ADA. So those are the two choices the council has. So as I started my soliloquy saying I don't like attorneys, this is why I don't like attorneys. You know? Because, you know, you have someone from Daytona Beach who clearly has no interest in knowing the last five-year budgets in the town, or every minutes of the town, now costing the taxpayers of the town substantial dollars to redo the entire website so that they can read the website in Daytona Beach. So that's coming before you soon. Russell's already got some audits started. I saw some of the paperwork tonight, and there's a lot that needs to be fixed. Any questions on that issue before I move on?
Is this being done by the Chandler brothers?
No.
Okay, because they're famous for that. They came after FDOT. We had gates, they were causing that, they were calling that false imprisonment, and they sued FDOT all over the place.
Yeah, no, this is more of a straight ADA attorney.
Yeah. Specialist.
Any other questions on this? Because we're going out for bid now.
Are they gonna, is it gonna make the computer be able to speak to that? How is somebody blind gonna be able, how's it gonna make it work for them? I guess explain what they're looking for. Because none of it makes any sense.
Yeah, Mayor, what you're referring to is, okay, so the screen reader that Keith referred to basically takes the text that's on the screen and reads it to them audibly. So they have the ability to read what's there. What happens is some of the versions of PDFs don't provide all of the information that's on a document. So while you have the PDF and you have a screen reader, it may read some of it. But for instance, I'll give you an example. If there's a picture in Marty's budget book, we'll use that example, of a horse in a barn, the screen reader can't discern that that's a picture of a horse at a barn. So the person cannot read everything with the screen reader. Another example, charts, which are rife within a budget document, cannot be read by these screen readers. So what you have to do is you have to put in what's called alt text. So for instance, that same photo with a horse in a barn, the alt text for that photo would state there is a picture of a horse in a barn. And that will read that to the person who's sight impaired. Same thing with the.
But the person who's sight impaired, how can they even click on something to make it do that if they can't see?
I'll be honest with you, I'm not that well versed in how they utilize the screen readers, the screen readers.
Windows has a whole bunch of capabilities built in for assistance for.
So you can tell it to do something?
Tell it, you can, there's different types of mouses for people that are visually impaired. It's called accessibility. Every Windows machine has got it. But the plugins for the browsers, the alt text is what, when you hover over a picture, you know how it'll say something about that picture? That's what he's referring to. To build that back into everything we have on our website gets pretty insane.
Let me ask you a different question. What if we shut it down for six months and readdress it? I'm just asking, I mean, because this sounds.
I'm not an attorney, but I don't think that would absolve us of our liability, especially when we put it back on in six months.
Well.
And the issue also is that, and I won't speak to this issue too much when we have our esteemed attorney right next to me, but you know, even if we settle, even if we chose to settle with this one particular person who, by the way, we don't have a lawsuit yet. What we had was a letter for a request for an accommodation, right? But which is the precursor for a lawsuit. If we do settle, all that does is raise our hands to everybody else and tell us, tell everybody else that we're a city that settles. And I don't think that that's.
The letter came from the attorney, not from the individual, correct?
I'm sorry?
I know. It starts out by a letter by the sight impaired individual who asked for what we call reasonable accommodation. And that reasonable accommodation letter is followed by the letter from the attorney saying we're suing you for failure to provide a reasonable accommodation. In this case, we actually, in my opinion, have provided a reasonable accommodation by offering to have Marty read the entire budget to them. So I believe we've complied.
Sorry, Marty.
But I want to make it clear, you know, in my remarks, do not sound crass. If anyone from Southwest Ranches ever had a hearing or visual disability, I'm sure there's not a single one of us who wouldn't make sure that they knew every single document and what was in it. And same thing probably throughout Broward, Day County, et cetera. But when you're in Daytona Beach, it's 100% a targeted campaign to seek fees from our municipality.
So this isn't someone that used to live in Southwest Ranches, is it?
No.
Never?
No.
So is this something to talk about in front of?
Familiar with anybody from Pembroke Pines?
No, it's totally, I mean, it is what it is. It's going across the entire municipal field. There's nothing to speak about it. You're gonna have to upgrade your screen reader or get rid of your website. Those are the two options. So to end that discussion, to tell you one final thing. So I reached out to the Attorney General's Office this week and I said, you know, this is horrific. Why aren't you doing anything about this? You know, they're forcing our hand to either redo our entire website and spend thousands and thousands of dollars. Or they're forcing us to take down all the information which you claim we should have to be open to the world so they can see everything. And she wrote back to me, you ought to contact the League of Cities. So full circle tonight. Okay, final, final thing that I'll just. Let's see what the costs come in. We're going out for bid and it'll be before you. Final issue tonight, just to give you a heads up. We thought we were working close to try to resolve the issue with McBride. The attorney had sent us a email saying would the town agree to 18 feet? With all the other caveats that Councilmember Jablonsky stated. We said maybe we'll have to have a shade session with the council to determine it. Following that offer, not more than, I think, Andy, 48 hours, maybe 24 hours later, he wrote back to me saying, my client's livid. He said I was never supposed to offer that to you. We're going the distance, so. Just wanted to tell you where we're currently at.
Good. You ready, you ready to go?
Right now, based on this judge's docket, it will be five years. So.
What?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
It will be a five-year case.
We don't have to look at those stamps for five years.
The judicial docket, especially for Judge Pearlman, who has a very heavy caseload for those attorneys here. If you have motion calendar, which is generally you just go in to do something quick and you used to be able to get in within a week. She's a month out on simple motion calendars, three months out on something that you'd want a special set. So, you know.
Yeah, but we could talk to Allen.
We had, just to let you know on this case, just to give one final update. They filed discovery, they wanted to depose four people. Doug McKay, Ryan McKay, which was interesting. A guy named Chris Reynolds, who I could not figure out for my life of me who Chris Reynolds was, until I found out that 15 years ago, he lived on Palomino. And for, in 2009, he worked for Sea Vision. So he hasn't worked there since, but in 2009, he worked at Sea Vision's way before, you know, the McBrides ever came here. And then they asked to obviously depose Jerry Calabrese. So they created a motion, went to court. And the judge said, I'm not letting you depose Doug McKay and Ryan McKay right now. That's not happening. And she said, as it relates to Jerry Calabrese and Chris Reynolds, you need to give a complete outline of what questions you could possibly ask them about your fence. You know, and then we have to go back before the judge. Well, going back before the judge on that's gonna be several months away again. So it's still my hope that this matter can settle. We're still doing everything in our power to lead it to settlement. Andy and I speak probably weekly on ways that we can try to get this resolved, but unfortunately, there's no resolution in sight.
He's got that kind of money to waste on an attorney and drag this out for five years? Why doesn't he just move the damn fence and get it over with?
Other than that, no more further legal comments.
Okay. Mr. Burns, you're up to bat.
Mayor, I have a few things. One, I just want to let you all know that we did some work over at the barn. We had the roof and the fascia have been pressure cleaned, so we're working on cleaning that up to help us put our best face forward. Keith had talked about the 60 most dangerous days in the state of Florida, the legislative session. Mentioned that we had, we had about $600,000 in the budget. I just want to add to that. Right now, we have $375,000 in guardrails and $200,000 in drainage projects. That's the two that were left of the six that we had originally submitted. This is, as I've said to you all before, a very long dance. We're most of the way through it and that session is closed. Those items are in the budget. They're set to be funded at the present time. All subject to the governor's signature. So we're in that process. Our lobbyists are continuing to work with the governor's office to make sure that we don't have an issue there. Mayor, we've drafted a couple of letters from you to the governor that, I know Danielle's gonna reach out to you probably tomorrow to get your signature on those so that we can get those out as well to support our efforts in there. And last but not least, I do want to thank Mayor McKay and Councilmember Schroder. The mayor was talking about volunteer projects before. The two of them got together with a team and you may not have noticed, and it's dark now, so you may not be able to tell, but they restriped the entire parking lot. So all the paint, all the striping that was starting to fade was not looking great, is all been freshened up and given us a nice clean look in the parking lot, so I want to thank you for that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Gladly.
Team effort, always fun. I want to thank you. You're going on your honeymoon or whatever. What are you doing? Your anniversary trip?
My wife and I are leaving tomorrow to celebrate our 30th anniversary. We've got a trip. We're heading out to the Southwest, yes.
Awesome, awesome. Well, have a safe, great trip. Enjoy it. We'll try to leave you alone. I'm sure Russell will fill in nicely.
Once tonight's meeting ends.
All right.
What's your personal number, Russell?
You'll have it. All right. Resolution number 10, please.
Yes, Mayor. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, urging the state legislature and federal government to initiate a study of the health effects of small cell towers built to accommodate 5G technology and to develop installation guidelines protecting the health and welfare of residents and providing for an effective date.
Motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second.
Awesome. Any public comment on this matter?
John Eastman, 188th Avenue. First of all, superb work here. Thank you very much. The industry, the telecom industry has a set of players that are revolving door into the FCC. And when they started pushing this 5G technology, they realized that municipalities and zoning regulations were an impediment to them. So they started at the top. And, you know, we're supposed to have a constitutional republic here with 10th Amendment rights that gives the states the power to regulate these things. And it just, it's an industry takeover from top down. And I appreciate your efforts to protect this because the 5G, the microwave frequencies actually affects the DNA in your bodies. And, you know, we've all had our families, but our children being exposed to this, you know, like my daughter has in her body my grandchildren. And if you look at further down, it just affects the genetic structure for multiple generations. And, you know, we really need to get some studies done on it and evaluate it before we do it. The local telecoms spent a lot of money here over the past two years wiring our neighborhoods. They have conduit to just about every telephone pole. And sooner or later, they'll be rigging the fiber that's gonna, you know, bring the data to these small cells and they'll start actually affixing them. You can see them along I-75 and a lot of other roadways now. About every quarter mile, you'll see the small tower with the big box. And that's basically what we're gonna get in our neighborhoods. And none of us have signed any consent forms to be radio.
Give me another minute.
So, you know, I am not gonna permit my family to get microwave radiation off a small cell in front of my house. I'll do whatever I have to do to prevent that. But I really appreciate all of you taking the time to put this out. This is a great document. And it just shows leadership. And hopefully some other municipalities in the state will look at this and knock this off and put it in as well. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
I think John's partially right. The latest thing in data transmission is photonics. I'm sure most people don't know what that means, but it's light waves. Light waves are not the same as microwave. However, photonics is twice the speed of microwave, twice. So it's 1,000 G, not 5G. So I, and Intel is pushing these things up like it's going out of style. That tells me that the industry's changing. And I don't think you'll see microwaves in a couple of years. However, they're compatible. So if you're the Navy or if you're whoever that's got the microwave technology, you can add on photonics and speed up your network. Cheaper. So I think that's where the argument really is.
Anyone else? Seen no additional public comment. Public comment is closed. Back to the council.
Couple of comments?
Go right ahead.
So John, you send me a lot of stuff. And I read it all. And when I saw this and you started sending additional emails educating me about this, I asked Andy to put it on the agenda. Now, I've been following this ever since you brought it to my attention, probably six months ago, maybe close to a year ago. And the thing that really worries me about this, and you're talking about your daughter giving a good example. Right now, we've got 2G out there. My phone is a 3G, 5G. They're skipping four completely because it's all about marketing. They're now finding in the studies from 2 and 3G, they subject animals to the radiation, all different sized animals. Some of these animals have been subjected to the radiation for 20 years now. And they're starting to show cancer and tumors from the radiation from basically our current cellphone technology. So the fact that somebody does a two-year study and says, ah, they're safe. It's not long enough. These research labs are doing it a lot longer. And what worries me is what John just said. 5G is far more powerful in terms of the frequency, not necessarily the strength of the waves, but the frequency itself. The reason this is all happening, guys, is the administration right now wants a win. And they've been pushing, the head of the FCC has been pushing this technology. Normally, it would have to be studied by universities and trade groups and, you know, then everything would be peer reviewed. It's not happening in this country right now. The industry has gotten a pass on doing the normal due diligence to prove that something won't affect the population. And to me, that alone is a good reason to say, whoa, slow down, Sparky, we need to look at this. Because this technology, I mean, everybody wants it. Everybody wants it. Because this is, this will introduce the internet of things to your phone. In other words, you can get to anything on your cellphone rapidly, even if you're out in the woods. But at what price? You know, to John's point, I've got two daughters home. Neither one of them have children yet. They're a little young for that. But the point is, what's the impact on them gonna be? What's the impact on their children gonna be? Forget about my family. What's the impact on mankind gonna be with this new technology that we don't know? 240 scientists wrote a paper, collaborated on research, and they've written a letter to the United Nations saying, worldwide, we need to look at this stuff. This isn't an American issue. This is a worldwide issue. But here, same old story. Now, why, why do the states not have rights here? Last year, I don't know if everybody remembers, Tallahassee voted, we went after Rick Stark on this. He was one of the few people that didn't vote for it. Because the telecom industry came in and bought Tallahassee. They did it all over the country. That's why all the states are complying. They bought the legislatures everywhere. They gave them 50, 75, $100,000, which is like, to me, that's corruption. But in any case, it got passed in this state because they came in and they paid off the legislature. Same thing across the nation. So they got what they want, but at what cost? And this, the resolution we have here today at least says Southwest Ranches is watching. And we're against this concept. More study needs to be done. Thank you, Mayor.
Gladly. Anyone else? Call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes. All right, number 12.
Number 11, Mayor.
11?
Yes. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in an amount not to exceed $28,771.10 to Motorola Solutions, Inc., to purchase public safety communication equipment for the Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Rescue, Inc., and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any public comment in this matter?
John Eastman, 188th Avenue. Mr. Mayor, did you get a chance to look at the numbers? Because I know you are arguing about these expensive units.
They're still expensive and they're $4,000 something a radio.
It's incredible.
But they were, they're like 40% off right now, these radios we're buying.
Well, the Army says if you don't have comm, you don't have, so, you know, I know these guys need it. But I sure hate paying that amount of money for a handful of radios.
You and me both. Anyone else? Seen that? We good up here?
Ditto.
All right, call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Oh, hold on.
I just want to make a comment on this, that we're getting a good bang for the buck here. We originally budgeted just slightly over $40,000. And I think that should be noted on the record. And so this is like an $11,000 and change savings by reacting now. And it's a time certain thing that we've got to do right now. So kudos to the powers that be that, you know, that got the discount in time.
Yep.
That's all. I just wanted to mention it.
Doug, just another quick comment. What Senator Geller was talking about that antenna in Hollywood. This is part of that whole same thing. We're not going out and buying radios because we think we need new ones. We need these to be able to communicate on Broward County's safety network across the entire county. So this isn't discretionary. We don't have a choice. And it is a good deal.
Good point.
Yep. Call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion adjourned.
Happy vacation, Andy.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you all for coming out.